Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
May we bow with hands and pray with me. Our Father which art in heaven, once again this group assemble to do diligence of the work that's before us. We ask you to come down, guide us and direct us, keep us on one accord, and keep Cartersville Georgia moving. Let these blessing and all blessing your son Jesus name. Amen.
Amen.
Please show us the pledge.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Over the roll, please.
Carrie Hogg, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cool, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tab Rin, Ward 6.
And I'm here too, but you never ask. We've got a great night ahead, let's go ahead and get to the people's business. We've got the approval of our council meeting minutes from our January 18th meeting. And council, you've had these well in advance of tonight, and had an opportunity to look them over, and it's your opportunity to make any edits, additions, or deletions to those minutes, and if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have got the opportunity once again to honor excellence in our community, and again, tonight, we've already honored the two-state champion GRPA football teams, and we've got a group of really special gentlemen in the room tonight, the Cartersville High School football seniors. And Coach King said he wasn't gonna talk, he said Bryce Wilkins was the big talker, so I kinda saw most of that. So if you would please, sir, step up and say a few words about your team, I'm sure he told you to be prepared to do that, right? Yes, if you'll please come up to the microphone.
My boy.
You do it, you do it every once in a while, it's a short cord.
I'm a short person, so sorry.
Make yourself comfortable.
Well, like he said, my name is Bryce Wilkins, and I've been going to Cartersville High School since freshman year for four years. I just wanna say thank y'all for having us here, it's truly been an honor to play for Cartersville these past four years, we've learned many lessons on the field and off the field, thanks to our amazing coaches, and I just wanna say thank y'all for having us.
Perhaps a future communications major. I have a proclamation I'm gonna read, and then I'm gonna present, I've got one for each of the 31 seniors, and then extras for coaches and people that Coach King deems necessary, but I will tell you, before I read this, some of you may know, some of you may not know, I have the honor of, in my real job as I call it, calling the football games as the station manager at WBHF, and been doing that since 1999, so I guess just about as long as most of y'all have been alive. I got stories of Jake Richards, who's sitting over there in my front yard when he was about five years old, that I won't share publicly, but anyhow, it has been a pleasure to watch this group of guys accomplish what they accomplish, and you've represented our community in a fine fashion, and people around the state know where Cartersville is a lot because of what you guys have done, and so I'm real happy to read some of these accomplishments that, some of them you heard at your banquet, there's a couple of them that I did a little digging for, I'm gonna throw some numbers out there that might astound you, I can't guarantee they're accurate, but I'm pretty sure they are. This one I know is accurate. Whereas this group of Cartersville seniors earned a 53-3 record over their four years, not bad. Whereas these seniors won two-state championships, four-region championships, and three final four appearances. And whereas the team amassed 14 playoff wins. Whereas this group of seniors outscored all opponents 2,417 to 530. Y'all are mean. Including outscoring playoff opponents 588 to 205. Whereas this group achieved a school-record 41-game winning streak. And whereas this group of Cartersville Purple Hurricane seniors represented their school and the city of Cartersville with character and class both on and off the football field, while setting the standard for all future Hurricane football teams. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the city of Cartersville, along with this city council, encourage all citizens to recognize the outstanding achievements of this group of young men, and to follow the spirit of dedication, unity, and community pride displayed during their years as Cartersville High School Football Purple Hurricanes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Now, if I'll ask y'all, I'm gonna ask y'all to try to pile up in here, we'll get a group picture, and I'll hand off these proclamations. Alright, who else? I'll take a right. Y'all on the right, it doesn't get, I'll take on the podium. Say cheese. Somebody good?
Great.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Yeah, yeah, y'all enjoy, you're welcome to stay, but you're even, I'm sure you buy that. What else would a young man have to do? Alright, Randy, I think we can go ahead and start this next item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Put that back down. Kevin McElwee has been nominated to fill the unexpired term of David Caswell on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we do recommend this nomination for your approval.
Okay, any discussion, if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Wait, I had a question. Do we send him a letter thanking him for his service, David? Do we send David a letter or something thanking him for his service?
We will. I just found out Monday or Tuesday last week that he wasn't coming.
Normally y'all, normally they present on a plaque.
Yeah, we'll have a plaque made for first time.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I know he's been on there for a service as well.
And he was formerly a planning commission member also.
Alright, so we had a motion somewhere. Carrie, Carrie, which one? Can you designate? Thank you. Got a Carrie and a Gary, and all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. Manino, if you'll please continue on with Z-1802, please.
Thank you again, as you noted, Z-18-02 is a rezoning request from Chris Brock, rezone .174 acres from light industrial to R7 single-family residential, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this time? If there is not, I'll open up a public hearing relative to case Z-18-02, and anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z-18-02, and turn it over to council for your consideration.
I think a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, you've got the next item as well, I'm busy guy tonight, please turn it over.
Thank you again, as you're aware, we have an adopted comprehensive plan with the city of Cartersville, we're in the midst of doing a tenure update, as part of that update, we are combining our plan with the county's plan and all the other cities within the county, so there'll be one unified document. With that, we held a public hearing in November, and we're recommending approval of the resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan update. The county has already done so, and all the other cities within the county have done so. Now, it's a fluid document, we continue to change and modify it as things change, and things will continue to be improved. The mapping and so forth now will be put in a format that we're not used to, but we're trying to adjust to it, but with that, we do recommend your approval of this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve the updates.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Reed, you have the next couple items, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council, the first thing I have before you guys is a resolution for approval of our 2018 festival zones. In accordance with how we've done this in the past, rather than bring you 20 individual items, I have packaged together all of our known dates, this includes downtown events as well as partner events for other organizations in downtown to establish festival zone in accordance with the city ordinance on festival zones. Staff does recommend approval at this time, pending all provision of necessary documents to the city clerk to go along with the alcohol permits that we require.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on these festival zone items?
I take it that not all of these will have alcohol at them, all these events?
Probably most of them will, yes.
Will?
Yes, sir. There's a few that may not, like, for example, the, let me see, we have one of the art unveilings, they may or may not use alcohol, but we did want to go ahead and establish the opportunity, and then to follow up with the appropriate permits and stuff as needed.
I think it's awesome to see that many things that are happening downtown, so that's really cool. And with that being said, I'd like a motion to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion, and I have a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is a discussion item, and I'll ask Ms. Reed to kick that off for us.
Alright, so in line with the idea of our ongoing events, we do have specific areas of downtown that we have traditionally rented out, we have some events coming up that have asked to utilize areas of city property that are outside of these established facilities, so in trying to bring up our policies to meet the use and needs of what people are requesting, we are looking to expand the available facilities for rent per the packet that was included in your agenda. So a lot of these would include sort of the as-available areas that we have traditionally rented, as well as areas by special arrangement in the event of movies, larger events, or other private organizations that want to utilize downtown facilities, all of which is outlined in the facility rental guidelines.
Does the use of any of this other adjacent area that you're not renting out right now, does that preclude you from having events like the ones we just talked about that could be revenue generated for the?
Correct, so specifically with the under-the-bridge area, that is adjacent to an existing rental place, which is the Founder's Oak parking lot, so were we to have an event there that was permitted but not actually charged in the same way that our other events are charged, we would not have the opportunity to use a established facility and charge in the same way for that, so.
I'd like to make a clarification of the area.
Yes.
I believe that the group that maybe have started this, we have a map here in our handout where they wanna close two streets, use the current street under the bridge and the parking area, I think that that's totally different from what the, another group that uses it every Sunday morning uses this place just under the bridge, and does not use any road closures or anything like that.
Right.
So I would better, I would feel more inclined to leave the place under the bridge, talking adjacent to the gas department, that a free zone, I think, 'cause I think this would fall under a different parameter when you wanna close the streets, I think that, is that not right, is that a different?
No, we talked about this in work session, I think, again, certainly there's different types of events, and, you know, I think there's opportunities for people to gather and not require city services versus people that are wanting to have a gathering that does require city services and resources. Again, we don't, if people are requiring us regardless of what good they may be doing, if they're requiring city staff to be present, if they're asking to close streets and requiring public safety to be involved with that, if they're utilizing our facilities, no different than anything else, they should have to pay just like anybody else that was out there. I look back at the original part of the discussion item, and Ms. Reed's request to basically expand what areas they would make available for rental, I don't know without hearing from this organization directly, but, I mean, it seems to me that we have an area that's available for rental that we're comfortable with, that we're familiar with, that merchants are comfortable with, and, or we have certain, we have different designated areas, and I don't know that expanding or changing those designated areas is really required, I mean, perhaps they could just rent the spaces that we have that are already available for rental, it'd be my thought. And again, this is a discussion item, she's looking for some direction, this isn't anything that we have to make a final determination on tonight, she's looking for some direction, I know there's a little bit of a time crunch on it, but this is the first time we've had an opportunity to talk about this, so continue on.
I would just, I would be a proponent of leaving this space directly adjacent to the gas department as a free zone, I think the other space though is a road, and I don't know, you know, I think that would be, is a different animal.
It is, and we do have the opportunity to close roads with the approval of police, fire, and public work, so there is a process that we also have to go through.
And that would require city services.
And city council, too.
Correct.
Yeah, and that would require city services, then would, I think, would then impose a fee.
Sure, Mr. Willey, could you add a comment?
I was just gonna say, when you're talking about closing roads, that ultimately will come to council. Now, you know, y'all may decide to do that as part of multiple festival permits like you approved earlier on the agenda tonight, but y'all ultimately decide for the closing of any road except for those that are related to road construction and other ongoing activities.
Okay, thank you.
Are you having a lot of requests for different sites than what we currently use?
Not typically, in the instance that sort of brought this to the table, it was primarily the use of the recurring use, so in our established facility guidelines, we have a limit on the number of events that you can recurrently do downtown without approval of the board and council, and when brought to my board, some of their concern was that by using adjacent areas for free, we're losing the opportunity to potentially incorporate other, you know, events that utilize a different structure for downtown. And to Councilman Ross's point, there, I think, is a difference between the times of use and the methods of use, so there's some question.
So let me ask you this, and I'm certainly not binding, and again, this is a discussion item, just trying to get more information, you referred to your board, and I know, I mean, typically like Planning Commission will make a recommendation, although your board doesn't typically do that, but kind of checking the temperature of your board, do you feel comfortable saying whether or not they would want this to happen, or if they not, are they just simply looking for direction?
I do feel comfortable saying that, I believe that our board is in favor of this happening, they have seen these amended facility guidelines, which are not what is in current use, this is a proposal based on this discussion here, so they've seen these, they are aware of the rental fees, of course, we have all the insurance requirements and things that are already established for use of city property, but I do feel comfortable saying that this is something that they support.
So, in the, the areas, I mean, there are several different options for renting space downtown that already exist, that we've, again, you already have policies, boundaries, fees, and everything established for.
Correct.
So I guess I just come back to the discussion item as to whether or not council wants to change, alter, expand those offerings.
I think that we should maybe offer them an existing area, and then if that doesn't meet their approval, then we can look at what other arrangements, but that's where I would go, I would, if we already have established areas, and leave the space by the gas department free.
Anybody else?
I take it that we're gonna stew on this a little bit?
Yeah, we're not making, again, this is our first look at it, and...
Correct, and I do have a meeting with the ministry group in question on Monday, this is a good opportunity for us to get the sense of council direction, interest, and, you know, I have the opportunity to discuss this with the organization.
Sure.
And come back to y'all with a little more clarity on that topic based on where we come to with that.
I mean, I'm fine with council if, at our next meeting, if we have this as a discussion item again after we have enough time to, or if council wants to take some kind of action, we'll kind of mull that over the next little bit.
And just to let you know, if y'all do decide y'all do want to expand the territory, that territory is established currently by ordinance, so will require an ordinance amendment, which will be two reasons for y'all.
Yeah.
We're not talking about space under the bridge.
Yeah, if they wanted to add the space under the bridge to territory, as rental territory, we would have to amend the ordinance, 'cause that is currently not covered by the ordinance.
You're not talking about downtown, are you?
No, no.
I think it would help in general if you could just give us an idea of where the expanded areas are, what are they requesting specifically, under the bridge, parking lot, a road?
In this instance, specifically, under the...
Fifty cents.
Oh, well, that would help.
Under the bridge area is the main area that has come into question, some of the other areas, like you see on the facility rental guidelines that I provided, North Wall Street parking lot, South Wall Street parking lot, these are indicated by special arrangement because we do periodically have things, like when Guardians of the Galaxy came to film here, or other events that we, gave us some opportunity to put some parameters on where parameters didn't effectively exist, so this was just an opportunity to tighten up some of these policies that we have in place.
A map for future consideration might help, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, council.
Alright, Michael Hill, come on forward, sir.
Mayor, good evening. We are offering a letter of acceptance from JLL Advisory, this is just you folks giving us permission so that the mayor can sign and the city clerk can sign for us to get an appraisal on a piece of property, this happens to be two parcels, otherwise it would have been a little less, so it's seven grand, that's what we're looking at now.
That's why you're coming to them, it's both five.
Yes.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries this, we had a third on that one, too. Bob, you've got the next two, please, sir, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone, first up is our Mission Road Sewer Phase 3, we need to execute a contract with CSX, part of that work will require pouring under the CSX tracks there at Mission Road and where the downtown stables are located now. In order to do that, we have to do an encroachment agreement, it's a fairly standard agreement we do with the railroad, and they have reviewed those plans and have approved contingent upon the execution of this agreement, and us cutting them a check for $13,825, so would ask for your permission, your approval, to execute any and all documents related to that, and to make that payment.
Okay, thank you.
One time, if you're right.
One time, yes.
Okay, any discussion, if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, continue Bob, please.
Yes, sir, next up would be our Rogers Station water line improvement, I know that's a little tough to see, Rogers Station is a little bit of a nebulous area, but it's bound by Burnt Hickory and Castle Road and Iron Belt, this particular neighborhood did not do a house count, but you can see that it's pretty substantial, that entire area in yellow is fed by one two-inch water line, and has been since, I'm guessing, the 60s. There are some issues out there, this has been on a capital improvement project list for quite a while, and we think it's time to do something about it, to that end, we ask an engineering firm, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, to give us a proposal on designing the water main fix for this area, that is not a firm that we've used before, but we have had several projects we've attempted to use them for, and this one just seemed to work out, so what we're asking tonight is that you would approve an engineering services contract, which is a standard document we execute with new engineering firms, and also that you would approve task order number one under that engineering services contract, which is their proposal for the design, and their proposed cost for design is $119,661, and that would include absolutely everything from no design at all right now through construction, so that would be a full freight engineering fee for those services.
What's the timeframe for the scope of work once it were to get started?
They'll have to do, it'd be hard to answer that right now.
I understand, I know it's a different question.
Typically, what I'm working on nowadays is I'm allowing nine to 12 months for engineering on something like this, sometimes we get them faster, sometimes we don't, and then what we're trying to do is to build a suite of design projects so that we can build the next fiscal year and keep those things rolling along.
You budget this in the next fiscal year, then?
Absolutely.
The construction of it?
Yes.
I was talking with Bob earlier, and he mentioned that the lines are so small out there that folks in that neighborhood have to coordinate when they take showers.
We...
That's what I was thinking when you said two-inch lines.
We had an issue Thanksgiving where we had a call-out, people didn't have water in their upstairs bathroom, and typically that's a private plumbing issue, you know, something's broken, somebody turned a valve off. What we found that solved the problem was there was a leak in the neighbor's meter setting, and it was bleeding that pressure and volume off over there where it wouldn't push the water up to that, and that's a real problem, and that, it is high time that something be done with this. Also, as you can imagine, with a two-inch water main, there's no fire protection there, there are no fire hydrants there at all.
So at this point, you wouldn't guess what the improvement cost after the design?
Actually, I have a very, you know, it's not based on an actual design, but I would say that you're probably looking at, for a talk-in number, 1.3 million, and that would include this engineering cost as well, that'd be an all-in, constructed, done.
Okay, thank you for the information on that, chairman, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, Mr. Hassabrock.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, we, the electric department needs to purchase a replacement transformer for the transformer that we used when Jimmy John's restaurant came to town, and they were on a transformer with other folks, it just, it was just enough to push us over the top, so we had to use our spare, and so we're asking to replenish that spare, and we took bids, we had four bids, and we're asking council to approve the low bid and the low total ownership cost, and that is from Erby for a CG transformer for the price of $7,481, and this is a budgeted, we budget the capital items in anticipation of certain amount of usage during the year, so this is a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, next item, please, Don.
Okay, last council meeting I came to you and made you aware that we were going out for the 2018 agreement with Sterling Planet to buy green energy certificates for, primarily for Aquafill, and tonight I'm coming to you, we're wanting to close out the calendar year 2017, and we estimate, like, we estimated what the usage would be in 2018, and so, but 2017, we were a little short, so this, what I'm asking you for tonight is to purchase the shortage to make up where Aquafill can say that they're 100% green energy, so we need to purchase an additional $1,275.98 worth of green energy certificates. And there's two contracts, there's one with Aquafill, and there's one with Sterling Planet, and Keith has reviewed both contracts and approved them.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, from Don to Dan.
As Mayor and council, I'm urging for you Corporate Health Partners Agreement for Health Awareness Program, a few months back, brought this to your attention for our wellness program in 2018, we kind of waited... We kind of waited to get this started, but now that April Tolbert's on board with Health, uh, HR Director, we've kind of discussed Phase Two of the project with Corporate Health Partners, which is going to be a thirty-five thousand dollar cost, felt like we could do some of that in-house. So, bring back the contract before you just do Phase One, which is the biometric screening for the, the city employees, and a one-time consulting fee for them to go over the results with the employees that do take the test. Cost of this, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six, and request your approval of that.
Okay. Thank you, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Chairwoman, entertain a motion. Um, Mayor- Oh, I'm sorry. Before y'all do, um, I don't, um, there's really no backup documentation in the package on this. And although I know during our discussion, it was stated that it was going to be mandatory for all employees, since there's no, nothing in here that says that, I think it might be behoove counsel to make that part of the motion, that, that it is that, since you will be making a decision effective for all employees.
Uh, and I think, as we discussed in the work session, that would be effective for all employees with the exception of-
The Fire Department.
The Fire Department, who has their own screening system, so. Jason, did you practice that in the work session?
Yeah, I mean, I, let's see if I can remember. Dan, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the contract with CHP. And, uh, council feels it's mandatory that all employees, other than Fire, participate in the biometric screening and sit with a coach for one, for their results.
Are you asking him, or are you asking him?
That's Matt, the, the, the mayor.
No, I made a motion.
We're just talking about that first piece, the twenty-five, nine, nine, six.
Yep, correct.
Can I ask a question about that? Is there any reason someone would need opt-out of doing this? Or, I mean, I just have no idea.
Is there one you can take out?
I have no idea, I'm not even sure what.
Well, I think, I think the purpose in doing this-
We do, we do, it's like a benchmark screening, or something, and what it does is-
Blood pressure.
Yeah, it picks up people that don't go to the doctor. And we, we, in the past, have found people really at risk and saved some lives today.
Yeah.
They can either do the blood work for the finger prick and get that analysis, that information, they get a report, and they can take it to their primary care physician. The, the coach from CHP will go over the results, but obviously, they may direct it to their primary physician if they need to get more information from their doctor.
But, to, to answer your question, Gary, people have opt-out of this sort of nationally at various programs due to certain religious reasons.
Yes, that's what I was getting at, help their religious reasons.
I'm a little slow, I didn't call.
Yeah. And will we make that option available to them, or will we be required, I suppose?
Well, legally, I'm not the attorney, but I think we have to.
If they have a relig, if they refuse for religious reasons, it's not something that we can actually mandate.
So, that being said, Councilman Stett, would you like to amend your motion?
No.
And plug that piece on it?
That's just what law is.
We're good. If, we don't need to open that can of worms, if somebody feels that they have that religion, they'll, they'll talk to them at the time.
Okay, so-
Yeah, we don't need to add them.
Okay. Does anybody care to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We do have two items to add, I'll ask council to add those two items right now.
Is that moved?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, there's even more, all in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we have two items added. Who is going to kick us off with this service delivery strategy?
Which would you like to do first?
I would like to talk about the service delivery strategy. There's, there's actually two items we're going to roll into one, one of them is an added item. Council, I guess I'll handle it. Uh, last, um, last meeting, I asked you, at the request of council, uh, excuse me, uh, the council may ask you to, to sign, we had the option to serve one of two different documents. One, uh, that was an agreement with the county for the service delivery strategy. The other one was to ask for a six-month extension through the DCA to get that item worked out. We had determined, or y'all authorized, because I asked for it, is to go ahead and to sign, we had an agreement with the county, everybody says, yeah, we're just going to, we don't need the extension. The county actually advised us that we did not need the extension. So, y'all authorized me to just sign the document that says we're in agreement and move on. The two items that are now lumped together, the DCA has come back and asked the county to go ahead and sign the extension, even though chances are we won't need it. Uh, on that item, I'd ask you to authorize me to sign that, but I'm going to wait to see that it's even needed before I sign that extension, if that's acceptable for y'all. Uh, the second piece of the item, which is the item that we added, is simply a resolution or some form of a resolution, um, that, that confirms that y'all approved my signing of the piece of paper at the last meeting. Now, if that doesn't make any sense, then you, then you got it. But that's what we're being, that's what I'm asking you to do tonight. It's a, it's a, one, the first, so the first part is perhaps extending this beyond the thirty days at DCA's request. The other part is just confirming that, that we agreed to the piece of paper that I signed at the last meeting.
I'll have to see what would happen if you didn't at three.
So, do we make a motion to approve both of these at the same time?
There you go.
Please.
There you go.
I make a motion to approve both of these, that make no sense.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
They have to make no sense.
Uh, the final item on our, uh, agenda, uh, the planned agenda, let me be very clear of that, uh, is a dedicated fees, uh, resolution, Mr. Grove?
Yeah, uh, we had been asked to support a, uh, HR one fifty-eight that's been sponsored by Representative Jay Powell of Camilla. And what this does is simply require the state to spend fees the way they're collected. One that has a local example that you might find interesting is relative to Joshua's Law, which was developed and sponsored locally. That law collects between three and ten million dollars annually, and only eight million has been used to fund teen driver programs since two thousand and five, so clearly, the funds are being diverted elsewhere. We've been asked to put the resolution together and put it on the agenda and have you approve it, which, uh, which I'd recommend for you.
Okay, any discussion on this item? And if there's none, a motion is in order. Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
In regards to that, have we got any opinion from any of our local delegation?
Uh, I requested information from each of our local delegation members, and of course, when they're down there at the Capitol, I, I, it was solicited by text. That's just kind of typically the way we communicate when we're in session. And it wasn't something that was necessarily on their radar screen. I had asked them for their opinion on it a couple of weeks ago, because again, we don't want to necessarily push something that's, that they might be actively working against, or at least without even talking to them about it. But, uh, the truth of the matter is, is there was legislation that they, some of that local delegation probably passed with, in this example, with Joshua's Law, that said, we're putting this in place, and when you do this, this money's going to be raised for it. And evidently, some of that money, and that, and that's just one example of many where stuff is, something's passed and it's supposed to be dedicated to going to a certain fund, and it ends up going somewhere else. And so, that's, uh-
Well, that was, I mean, that's my point, is they have, they have no comment as to where the money's going?
Uh, I asked them if they had seen Resolu, House Resolution one fifty-eight, if they had some sort of, or House Bill perhaps, uh, one fifty-eight, and what their, if they'd seen it and if they had any thoughts on it. Most of them said they were not familiar with it at that time.
And to answer your question, Jason, in the information that was sent to us with respect to the resolution, um, they stated that the money was going into the general fund for general distribution.
Which then puts the burden on us to fund some business.
There you go.
Hooray.
All right, well, that's, uh, the items on the agenda. Is there any other business that needs come for the city of Cartersville this evening? And if you are here to speak, please step forward to the podium and give your address. I need your name and address, uh, for our clerk, and if we can just do one at a time, would that be okay, or?
Jane is my neighbor, and it's for the same matter.
Okay.
If, that's my, I'm Megan Humphries, I'm at one twenty-six Douglas Streets, the haunted house. And I have with me Jane Hagler at one fifteen East Carter Street.
Thank you.
Okay. And I know we've had a lot of communication lately about the gas tank that is going on Carter Street. I'm not going to rehash everything that we've discussed before. Uh, it's just, we have some concerns moving forward. I see that there is a joint comprehensive plan that's in the work with Bartow County. Um, it seems to me that the action that's taking place now with putting the gas tank within a neighborhood conflicts with the, the plan that the city has. It seems to me that this is not a good faith effort in working between the city and the county to further a vision for growth and for a higher quality of life. Um, we met with the commissioner and the county administrator yesterday. While they were very apologetic, um, we essentially got a, a pat on the head and were offered to provide input for landscaping design for this monstrosity going in our neighborhood. When we asked about what kind of fueling trucks were going to be used, I referred back to my conversation with the state Fire Marshal, Jason Pritchett, who approved the plans. Uh, just another note, he actually had concerns about the size, size of the property. When I asked him what kind of fueling or refueling truck would be used for this station, he made the statement to me that it would either be a tractor-trailer, or it would be a Bobcat. He could not state with certainty what it would be. When we, um, provided this information to the commissioner and to the county administrator, neither one of them could confirm which type of, um, transport vehicle would be used. They were honestly clueless when we posed that question and kind of conversed back and forth what could be used. We also asked for a moratorium on this project so that we could actually be heard. It's our understanding, you know, having spoken to Mr. Pritchett from the state Fire Marshal, this has been in the works for months, and no one has come to us and discussed this with us, which is very disheartening and further shows that there's not really a good faith effort with working together on this, this joint plan. I, I looked at the two thousand thirty plan for the city of Cartersville, we're in North Town. This is an area that is supposed to be revitalized. This is a step backwards, not a step forwards. We asked if it was in any way possible to have an alternative entrance for this facility to at least get it off Carter Street, because we have high schoolers who are walking to and from school. Actually, one of the football players tonight is one of those kids who's walking to and from school on Carter Street. And we have families who their only mode of transport is their, their feet. That's how they get places. We have families going to the park, uh, you know, we, we have serious concerns about that entrance being used for these, basically, the, the buses that you see Bartow Transit being used for, for this, um, this facility. So, we, we do have those concerns. Uh, it seemed that they were at least willing to talk to their buildings group about that possibility, but it didn't look promising. So, I, there's not anything we can do about this. Uh, the tank itself, they said, was around a hundred thousand dollars. The work going into this is around ten thousand. We proposed, you know, looking into Tennessee Street, because surely, that would be a better way to move a, a tractor-trailer refueling this tank. Uh, and that, that was not something they were willing to, um, look into, uh, at, at least not at this time. But, moving forward, again, because we can't do anything with this, we would at least like to be taken into consideration moving forward, especially with the joint comprehensive plan that Cartersville and Bartow County are, are working on together to help improve the growth of our, our home. This is, this is all of our home, so, uh, moving forward, we are planning to start an alliance, and we hope to work more with our councilperson, Ms. Hodge. But we would at least ask that, um, in the future, our concerns be heard and be taken into consideration. I know there's not anything the city can do, the county kind of trumps, they can dang near get away with murder, it seems. Um, that, I'm being facetious in saying that, I just want to make sure that's clear, that's not an actual accusation.
We, we understand.
Okay. In my line of work, I like to make sure that's clear. So, um, Ms. Hagler is also here to express some thoughts and concerns.
Let me make a comment just prior to your, your comments, if that's okay. You know, there's been more than one project that this council has been a part of where we've, uh, held ourselves to the same standard that, uh, that private property owners. Uh, the example, when you and I were talking on the phone the other day, we're relocating our gas station after the sinkhole issue from a few years ago. And, uh, again, we went through the rezoning process, we went through the notification process. Um, we've had public meetings relative to that, those conversations are continuing now as we get even closer to, to developing them. So, I, I would say, and to your plea, um, you know, I, I would trust from our staff and, and that if anything's going to be done, you know, to city property, that we're going through the proper notifications of adjacent property owners, that we're holding ourselves to the same standard that anybody else would. And that would include, um, that would include notifying adjacent property owners. I also know that, like you, and like the two of you, Councilwoman Hodge is very passionate about that ward, that has seen a number of improvements and continues to. And that if there was something that we're going to be affecting people in a negative way that she knew of, I know that, uh, she and I would both be doing everything we can to make sure that people were at least notified and would have an opportunity to give input, uh, as to what would be going there. So, I just want to make sure that, that got out there, so. Ms. Hagler?
Thank you. Do you have anything to add? I just want to thank the council, because we were so excited, probably a decade ago, when the city council recognized North Town, and it was the first time I knew it had a name. And we had cookouts, and it is a wonderful neighborhood. It's a neighborhood where people sit on porches, where people walk to town. And, and I feel like the fact that the city recognized it as something that is positive about Cartersville and how to make it better. My husband and I own a couple of them, but anyway, we, we own six properties, all contiguous right there across the street from this tank that's going in. And, um, when the, whoever set up the recycling place quite a few years ago, they came to us. I don't know if city or county, but they came and they talked to us, they talked to other neighbors. They treated us as people who might, you know, they want, they seem to value our input. And really, I feel like this is detrimental to the neighborhood. I walk out and get the mail, I pull weeds, you know, it, it's in sight, it's not like across town. And when we talked to, I appreciated the commissioner meeting with us, and, um, and really, everyone at the city I talked to and carry, everyone was very welcoming and accessible. But the city seemed to be saying, well, we cannot do a thing, it is the county property. And the county was saying, indeed, I mean, literally, well, too bad, if city zoning doesn't approve this, we don't have to do, well, they couldn't make us do it anyway. And to me, that was not, as you said, a good neighbor approach. Um, and they seemed to honestly just be totally surprised that we would object.
Thank you, and I understand your passion about it. You, you need to share those comments with, directly with the commissioner. And one of my, just one of my general rules for public comment, if, if, I don't know, you're not, I don't want anybody to be personally attacked if they're not here to defend themselves, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't appreciate it if something were said about one of the employees in a public meeting if we hadn't had a chance to talk about it. So, again, I'm not angry or censoring you or anything, but I just, I, I don't feel-
And I don't mean to attack.
I don't feel comfortable having you talk about somebody else that's, that's not here, that, that has nothing to do with the city of Cartersville, per se.
We need your help, is what I feel like.
I understand.
And we, you are our representatives, and I love the city of Cartersville, and I, I was just shocked to wake up and see the trucks digging up asphalt and not have a clue what was happening, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I would just like to point out, we didn't come here because we thought that we could get away with bad-mouthing anyone. We do appreciate the commissioner and the county administrator meeting with us yesterday. Rules of hearsay and being present to defend oneself don't apply in this forum. Um, so, I mean, if, and this is an open meeting, so they certainly had the right to be here, and they could have been- and they could have been present. I know we expressed that we were going to be present today, so if they felt the need to say something, they certainly could have been here to say it.
Sure.
I think one thing we all need to remember, that's city residents or county residents too, you know?
And we pay county taxes. What I felt like was we were not...it was taxation without representation. We were not notified, and it was...it's a discouraging moment. My feelings were very hurt that we could live there 30 years and love our community and love our neighbors and enjoy it, and to feel like it could just be one morning wake up and have the things being dug up and gas tanks put in. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And let me say both. I'll reiterate what I shared in our phone conversation yesterday, is, you know, when people stop caring about the neighborhoods that they live in, we've got some real big problems. So I appreciate your passion and your willingness to come speak before us and for caring about the little corner of the world we all call Cartersville. So thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing. I am your representative, though, and I thoroughly, thoroughly watch over what's happening in our ward. It's unfortunate that you were not spoken to, and I'm sorry about that, but I did speak on your behalf way before this ever started.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Hodge.
Yeah, you and I had conversations about that, were both together and with the county leadership about three, four months ago, was it? Probably maybe longer ago than that, so... Any other business that needs to come for council this evening?
Thank you all. My name is Eric Johnson. I live at 21 Saddlefield Circle. I'm here to represent Congressman Lautermilke and the rest of our staff. I'm one of his field reps. And so I just wanted to come before the council and before everyone here today and just let you know about the services that we provide. So for those who don't know, the congressman represents the 11th district. That is all of Bartow, all of Cherokee, segments of Cobb, and the Sandy Springs portion of Fulton County. And we have three offices. We have one office located here in Cartersville that is in the basement of the courthouse right down the street. We have one off of 92 in Woodstock, and then we have one at the Galleria location down in Marietta. So we offer a few services. We're all obviously always there to take concerns about issues that the congressman may be facing in DC. But we also have several caseworkers who work on cases specifically for constituents. It can be anything from immigration, social security, VA, postal service, et cetera. So if there's anything that we can ever do for the constituents of this area, please let us know, specifically for the Cartersville area, since it does directly impact this area. Most of the time, our office is not open, with the exception of Friday. We usually have one full-time staff member there on Friday, but we can always be reached at our main offices in Woodstock and down at the Galleria as well. Just for their information, I'll be there all day tomorrow as well if they have any concerns. And just please, I ask all those in this room and the council members, if you have any friends or business partners or people in your wards, just please send them our way, and we'll do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business that needs to come for council this evening? I just wanted that long, uncomfortable pause. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.